It is 6:33, it is April 13th, 2022. This is a hybrid meeting, which means we're on Zoom as well as in person. If you're watching it on cable, the meeting ID number, if you wish to go on Zoom, is 847-9853-9919. I'll give that meeting ID number again, 847-9853-9919. And the passcode is 070047. So for those of you before we started anything, for those of you who have been living under a rock, we had an election last Saturday and Dr. Brett Sukoffis is no longer a member of the Board of Selectmen. So I want to thank him for all the work that he has done for this town. As you know, he's been involved in at least half a million dollars in grants. He's done a lot of other stuff. We're right to fund our community because of him. So I want to thank him for his six years of service, and I hope to see him in some capacity in the future. We have a new member of the Board of Selectmen, Peter Karen. I want to wish Peter Karen.
Thank you.
Peter and I have worked in the past, we were probably about 16 years on the ZBA together. And you were my chairman at that time. So I also want to introduce Selectman Hull, because we're on Zoom, we have to introduce all the Selectmen.
Good evening.
And I'm Ken Pacheco. So will we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Please remain standing.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Could you please remain standing for a moment of silence? Since our last meeting, two Dayton residents have passed. Louis Bonaka, 75, of Dayton, passed away on Wednesday, April 6th. He was the beloved husband of Joanne Costa Bonaka, and he worked as a union laborer since he was 17 years of age until his retirement 10 years ago. Also passing was Matthew J. Epstein, age 74, of Dayton. He passed away unexpectedly on April 8th at his residence. He was the loving husband of Jeanette Owen, and he was the owner and operator of Nova Construction until his retirement. Could we have a moment of silence for both of these Dayton residents?
The next item is the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. So for those that don't know, every time after we have an election, we reorganize the Board of Selectmen. I know some of you have been looking forward to that, but you haven't been looking forward to that. However, I'm the one that's really been looking forward to this change in the Board of Selectmen. So it's open for nominations for Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I will step down and nominate Lenny Hull for Chairman.
I second that.
Is there any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
I know you were going to call.
I was going to say Dr. C. I'm sorry, apologize. It's going to happen many times. Peter Karen?
Aye.
And Ken Pacheco is a aye. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Don't be afraid to use it. I've been told you can't hit anybody with it, but.
And I want to thank you for all of your help through my first year as a member of the Board of Selectmen. I learned a lot in that year, and I learned a lot from you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Selectman Hull.
This evening, we're moving on with the scheduled appointments.
Point of order, could we pick a clerk as well as a member of the Board of Selectmen? I'm going to make a motion to nominate Peter Karen as the clerk.
I will step down and second it.
Thank you. Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman also aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, the role of the clerk is twofold. One, you will assist Mrs. Brady, if ever she is not present, with the minutes of the meeting.
Yep.
Also, and probably more important, because in the last year that I have been on the Board, Mrs. Brady has never missed a meeting. I did miss one. You will serve as Vice Chairman. So if I'm not here, you will run the meeting.
Do I get paid extra for that?
At this time, I would like to call Jacob Patello.
We need to vote on who's going to be the member. We need a member.
The member?
A member, just a member of the Board.
Okay. I'll accept nomination for Mr. Pacheco as the member of the Board of Selectmen.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman is also aye.
Just so everybody knows, I'm not going to be running this meeting. It just, this is a formality that we did a year ago, and you may not remember, that's all. So thank you very much.
I know about the clerk, but I didn't know.
Yeah, yeah. It should, it's a process of elimination when you think about it, but it is.
Schedule appointments. Jacob Patello is presenting for our vote, I believe, a Eagle Scout project, the Observation Deck at Braav Cove.
My Eagle Scout project is I built an observation deck. It's basically a platform, has one half's a bench, one half is a table, and it's up built in Braav Cove. And in the middle of the marsh, there's a rock out there, and I built on top of it. It's pretty big. I have pictures if you want to see.
Absolutely.
That's just some pictures of the process, what it finally looks like, and the area around us that we were working around. And the observation post is, the reason I wanted to build it up there is it's an amazing view, not many people know you can go out there. And I wanted to promote going out into the marsh, and so that people see the view, they see how great this marsh is, and they can want to make a difference to protect it and keep it safe. And I think that being able to put them right onto the center of it is a good idea. And so I decided to build the observation post, promote it, going out there, and give a reason to go out there, and let people know, you can go out there and experience the marsh for themselves in their own way.
Jacob, I many years ago was a member of Troop 45. Outstanding memories. Went to the National Jamboree with former Fire Chief Jeff Alley. I wish you a lot of success. Do you know when you're scheduled for your Eagle Review Board?
No, but if I get signature tonight, I will be able to send this in, and they'll let me know as soon as possible.
Is Mr. Ferry sponsoring or helping you with this project?
Mr. Ferry, I see helping with this project.
Mr. Ferry, could you come up and let us know if everything is going well, or if any way the Board of Selectmen can be of help?
You can go visit it, just wear boots.
Yes, yeah.
But it is finished. He had to make some minor adjustments to the original plan, but he was able to conquer the challenges and complete it.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen, anything before we take a vote on?
No, no, I don't have, I don't have anything, Mr. Chair. Like Mr. Ferry, he coordinates all of this, and he has with Mr. Patello. So like if he says everything's in order, then everything's in order, Mr. Chair.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe a vote is in order?
Yes, to authorize, I believe, the Chairman to sign on the Board's behalf.
Yes. Do I have a motion?
Just before that, though, is the reason why the post's on in the grounds, because it's wetlands, and you can't disturb the wetlands?
It's, the major reason is it's built on top of rocks, and you can't get the post into a rock, per se. So we used the concrete blocks as our bases and went off of that.
I'll entertain a motion for?
I'll make a motion that the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen sign off on the Jacob Patello's Eagle Scout project, Observation Deck in Braav Cove.
Second?
Second.
All those, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Aye.
Karen, Chairman also aye. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Best wishes.
Nice job.
Yes. And if you do have any problems, concerns, you reach out to one of us or to Mr. Ferry. Thank you. Congratulations. You must, you must come back. When everything is finished, please come back.
Last question to tell you that.
Scheduled on the agenda this evening is a proposal by School Resource Officer Stephen Hathaway and Alyssa Bennett for a comfort dog. Chief McDonald?
Good evening, Board of Selectmen. And I just want to congratulate Selectman Karen into this position, and good luck, okay?
Thank you.
So we're here today. Patrolman Hathaway here with me. Patrolman Bennett is on the phone there, so if you guys have any questions, you want to, after Steve talks about it a little bit, you can ask him. First, I just want to say that Patrolman Hathaway and Patrolman Bennett have done a great job of this, putting this all together. It's a lot of work, and it's going to be a great thing for this police department, the town, for schools, for just anything. They've done a fantastic job. However, they've been doing this, they've been consulting with Lieutenant Cronin on certain things, whatever they have to do. So they're keeping him informed, keep me informed. So I just want to tell Patrolman Hathaway and Patrolman Bennett, they're doing a great job. I think if they keep going, and eventually we're going to have this comfort dog, and it's going to be a nice thing in the town. So I'll let Patrolman Hathaway talk about it. If you have any questions, you can, after he talks, I know Patrolman Bennett is on, so if you want to have her say anything or ask her anything, you're more than welcome, okay? Thank you.
Good evening. So first off, I want to thank the Chief and Lieutenant Cronin. Patrolman Alyssa Bennett and I brought this to them about four months ago after we attend state training. And we, there was a bunch of comfort dogs at the training for school resource officers. So we brought it to their attention. We talked extensively with the people that already use the dogs in the school and in the community. They say that it is incredible the way it breaks the ice. There's more interaction between, you know, us and the youth of the community and the adults, too. So we brought it to them, they were all on board for us to research it and try to get the project started. We reached out to Somerset, who has a comfort dog now that is inside, they use it primarily in, I believe, the middle school and elementary school, but it goes to the high school as well. Got all the information from them, policies, PowerPoint, just all types of information. And then we reached out to Boonefield Labradors of New Hampshire, who supplied the dog. The best part about this program is that the dog is donated from Boonefield to us. The training for the dog is being donated. The vet care is being donated. The city of Taunton donated an old K-9 cruiser to us so that we could properly transport the dog around and not have it be a hazard to itself or the driver. We went to the superintendent at the high school and Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Azar and Dr. Blaisdell, and they were totally on board with this project and welcomed it with open arms. So we started the process, and here we are on the waiting list for a dog. And we just wanted to give you an update and take any questions you might have.
Mr. Pacheco?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you, Steve, as well as Alyssa. This was brought to our attention a couple of months ago that this was a possibility. This is a great opportunity for our students. These comfort dogs are used if there's a family loss, or there's a student that has passed away, or there's some student that's upset. Really, I don't, my dog comforts me, so I can see the advantage of having a comfort dog. My daughter loses a shower, and they've had a comfort dog for a while, and it's worked out very well for those students. So I congratulate you on this and coming up, and the Chief and Lieutenant Cronin for coming up with this and bringing this to our attention, and following through on it, quite frankly. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Karen?
No, this is the first I've heard of it, but I think it's great that you guys are doing this. Thank you for putting your time and effort into it.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions, and then I'm going to reach out to Mr. Mullen. Have you met with the school committee on this?
The school committee, no, we met with the superintendents on it.
Mr. Mullen? This evening, were you looking for a vote on this, or were you more for informational purposes?
So, yeah, like, so it was really, so it was really aimed at providing information and update on the project and on the process. So as the Chief mentioned, he provided an update a few months ago now, I believe, Chief, on the number of working groups that the Chief and the Lieutenant, you know, had been working on to implement. This was one of them, but also, so also because this, oh, you know, this initiative has been moving forward, oh, you know, like I suggested to Officer Hathaway and the Chief that an update be provided, so just like everyone was updated, oh, you know, like and new things were progressing and advancing as well.
What would be the next step to go before the school committee, or should we give a favorable?
So, yeah, so like at this point, so at this point, I don't believe any vote is actually needed by the Board. It was really just information. Like, as Officer Hathaway has mentioned, he has been in touch, he has been in touch with and received approval, like from Dr. Azar as well. Like what, oh, you know, like and Dr. Azar bringing this to the school committee's attention, or, oh, like or anything like that is really up to Dr. Azar. But, you know, the fact that, the fact that Officer Hathaway and the Chief, oh, you know, like have received approval at this point from Dr. Azar from our end, oh, you know, like allows everything to move forward as well. Oh, you know, but if Dr. Azar did, Dr. Azar did want to bring it to the school committee, I mean, I think it, oh, at some point, it would be helpful for the school to, it would be helpful, too, for the school committee to be in the loop as well, so everyone's on the same page. But I mean, really, oh, you know, that would have to come from Dr. Azar as well.
Ms. Bennett?
She's in class, so I don't know if she'll be able to answer. I'll try my best if you have.
No, I just, as the school layers on person for the Board of Selectmen, should you run into any obstacles, please let us know.
Absolutely.
And you'll be working closely with Dr. Azar. Mr. Mullen has established a really good relationship in the last few months, and that's been very helpful. And then Mr. Rooney will be coming on board in July. So we'll be glad to provide you any help we can. Chief McDonald, Mr. Hathaway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, thanks to Officer Hathaway.
I believe the month of April is Autism Acceptance Month, whereas autism spectrum disorder affects an estimated one in 44 children with over 7 million people in the United States considered on the autism spectrum. And whereas autism can cause challenges with verbal and nonverbal communication, social interaction, and repetitive behaviors, and can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background. And whereas autism is often accompanied by medical conditions that impact quality of life, and whereas a comprehensive collaborative approach will help to advance research, providing a better understanding of the many forms of autism, while strengthening advocacy efforts and ensuring access to services and resources. And whereas any early diagnosis tailored to individual needs can have lifelong benefits, easing the transition to adulthood and fostering greater independence. And whereas, no matter who you are, where you live, or your abilities, you should be able to have the connection to supports, services, community, and resources needed to live fully. And now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Dayton, do hereby proclaim April 2022 to be Autism Acceptance Month, and urge all the citizens of the Town of Dayton to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance.
Are you entertaining motions?
I will be shortly. Before I do, I see Mr. Smith is watching this evening, and he's done a great deal in this community over the last year, helping people with disabilities. He serves on that committee. He's also working with Nicole Mello to create a partnership with Cooperative Productions, the Dayton Public Schools, and the town in regards to many disabilities, autism being one of them. And I was wondering if Mr. Smith wished to express his views for the future, I'm sorry, his goals for the future.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I'm so excited to hear that we accept you, that we're proclaiming that it's Autism Acceptance Month and not Autism Awareness Month. I think that's a massive step in the right direction for what we've been trying to accomplish on the commission on disability, and also through other avenues, like Parks and Rec, and also like you had mentioned, our best buddies program. One thing that I'd just like to add for the town to know, I think this is a good opportunity as it relates to autism, is Parks and Rec was actually just awarded an Augmented Communication Board to be placed at the community playground. And what that is for is a, it's a picture board with sayings on it. So if a child cannot communicate with its peers, they can go over to the board and point at a picture and express what they're feeling or what they would like to do with their friend. And we're also working on the possibility of getting a couple additional boards, one for the Dayton Elementary School, and one for what will hopefully be the new North Dayton Playground, if that goes through. So we're trying to, you know, do our part to promote autism acceptance as well.
Mr. Smith, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Unless there are any additional questions, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen proclaim April as the Autism Acceptance Month.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman also aye. Motion passes. Before I go into public input, I have read up on some of the rules and privileges of public input. And I will say this before each public input session. Public input is not mandated by law. It is a privilege, and with that privilege comes some responsibility, and most importantly, respect for our fellow man. Also, public input should not be for town officials to circumvent the agenda. If public official has an item that they wish to discuss, I would ask that they contact Ms. Kerwin or Ms. Brady, Mr. Mullen, to put it on the agenda, and we will provide you the opportunity to address any department issues that you may have. At this time, does anyone in the public have, please come up and state your name and your address for the record? Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me up here. My name is David Rosa. I live on Lincoln Avenue in North Dayton. I think some of you know me. I want to thank you for your years of service and for your years to come of service on the Board. And I never got a chance to thank Brett for his time in service, so I'll do that now. But just a comment about autism, it's a growing concern. I hope we can find a solution or some way to diminish the growing numbers. Now I have the unpleasant task of addressing issues that have taken place, perhaps brought to your attention at the last CPC meeting. So my comments have to do with our good friend, Tim Rhines, and some of his behaviors. Now, I want you, you may not be aware of this, but there was a similar incident a few years ago.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, like we should, so we really shouldn't be talking about a person who hasn't been notified on the agenda, so I wouldn't allow it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
So I can't make a reference to a name?
No, you can't.
Okay. So, so.
He, to call out an individual as part of the government, they should be notified of have the opportunity for rebuttal.
For example, if you don't mind me, Mr. Chairman, that person came and started speaking and mentioned your name, and I wouldn't allow him to speak about you because you weren't present. You came later, but I didn't allow it. I guess it's not fair.
All right. So I'm going to sort of characterize some events without mentioning any names. But I think even in the event that you just described, it became very toxic, perhaps even violent. I believe you yourself signaled a police officer to assist you in calling the situation. And now, I brought this along as a simulated cane. If you can imagine an individual in a highly rate state, armed with a cane, challenging you to go out to the parking lot. Now, I don't know if you've ever been hit in the face with a cane or on the head, but it's not something I think you would enjoy or look forward to. So I just wanted, I wanted to sort of bring that to your, you know, emphasize that memory. Now, I am a senior citizen, I am a disabled veteran, I have served, I helped this town in good, in good ways. And I mentioned the individual when I started because I've served with him for many years, and I've gotten to know with him at many levels. But this is the problem, I think, in spite of the personalities that you have to face and you have to cross. And I don't envy you the task, but when you appoint somebody to a committee, part of your evaluation is their temperament. But when you appoint somebody to a committee, part of your evaluation is their temperament. Now, at the time you appointed them, they may have been a good frame of mind. Their temperament might have been acceptable. But when they arrive at a point where their temperament is no longer
Really should not be talking about this, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rosa, I think it would be best, because of the nature of the matter, that you meet with the human rights officer of the Town of Dayton, which is Mr. Mullin, and discuss this, or put your concerns in writing, and we will address it.
Okay, I will be happy to do that, and thank you for that direction. I will try to draw your attention to the film from the last CPC meeting.
I think we've heard enough on this. I think you need to
Well, I want to point out the behaviors of another person during the course of that meeting. There was a gentleman sitting to the right.
Any disciplinary, potential disciplinary action has an appropriate way for it to be handled, and it is not in a public session.
Okay.
You file a complaint with Mr. Mullin, and then we will review it, and if necessary, review it with town council and take the appropriate steps, but not in a public meeting.
Okay. I also noticed there's been no expression of remorse for any of the behaviors gone on.
I will suggest at this time that we stop this discussion. Please meet with Mr. Mullin.
All right. Well, remember Pinocchio, let your conscience be your guide. I'd be happy to meet with you at another time, sir. We did mention this briefly in the past. I will meet with you in a more formal session and go over these points. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone in the visual audience, TV audience that would like to participate in public input at this time? Thank you. Announcements?
I'll read the announcements, Chairman. The Dayton Lions Club Food Bank, just want to make everybody aware that I am a member of the Dayton Lions Club. The Dayton Lions Club Food Bank Distribution will be held next at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday, this Saturday, April 16, 2022, at Town Hall Lower Level, 969 Somerset Avenue. The Dayton PTO, Parks and Rec, Trails Committee, Bird Society, and the Dayton's Garden Club have teamed up to bring you some earth-friendly events to celebrate Earth Day. These events are happening from April 18th to April 23rd, and will be posted on our website and Facebook pages. There will be a prescription drug takeback event held on Saturday, April 30th, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Dayton Police Station, 1458 Somerset Avenue. This event is a one-day collaboration between the DEA and the Dayton Police Department. A reminder that open burning season is from January 15th through May 1st, between 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. A $10 permit from Dayton Fire Rescue is required prior to any open burning. Rabies Vaccination Day, Saturday, May 21st, 2022, from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Dayton Animals Shelter, 821 Tremont Street. $20 cash only per immunization. For more information, call the Dayton Board of Health, 774-872-0943. That's it for announcements.
Mr. Pacico, thank you. Mr. Mullin, Town Administrator's report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And welcome also to Selectmen Peter Karen. I look forward to working with you and for you and the rest of the town. So congratulations.
Thanks.
So I just want to update very quickly the board on a few things. On Thursday, on Thursday, March 24th, former Chairman Pacico, now member Pacico and I, we met over Zoom, I'm just trying to figure out this, this most, I'm sorry. We met over Zoom with Congressman Jake Archon Chalks, Congressman Jake Archon Class, Alec and Senator Mark Pacico. This was actually at the request of Congressman Archon Class. He reached out in mid, he and his staff reached out to us in mid-March and wanted to provide us with the ability to share the infrastructure priorities of the town that we have and that we've been pursuing. We also, as a result of that, the Congressional Funding Request Program, which is managed through his office as our congressman, so we actually had a conversation about that, too, and proposed three top infrastructure priorities to the congressman for funding. Like, a lot of the funding is, a lot of the funding opportunities are actually coming by way of the bipartisan infrastructure bill that passed Congress and was recently signed into law. And so we want to make sure we capitalize and take advantage of the infrastructure opportunities that are out there, and that are made available and that are made available at both the state and federal level. So we have an ability to access funding, you know, to really, to really help, to really help fund these infrastructure projects where we don't have to rely on the residents or ask the residents to do so. So in that meeting, we presented the overview to the congressman of our top three infrastructure priorities. Number one, being the total replacement of the Pleasant Street at Muddy Cove Bridge. And we outlined the priority that we've been placing, you know, to replace the bridge based on it being posted for the last few years, and based on it being actually identified in plans, in the MVP plan and the Hazard Mitigation Plan as well, but also the importance it has in the community along, and along the river as well. And we also emphasized to him that the town and the residents of the town made already at the special town meeting in November, like $150,000, $150,000 commitment to fund the engineering of that bridge replacement as well. And that was actually well received by the congressman. The other, the second priority involves our work with the Dayton Water District for the Brook Street water main upgrades. In the infrastructure, especially in the, with the water main infrastructure in the area of County Street, which needs to be addressed. And that, like for the Water District, they are their own, excuse me, they are their own separate entity as we know. But any kinds of federal funding that they have the ability to access through the congressman and his office, it has to come through the town. And we have a really good relationship with both Water Districts. And we wanted to give, you know, the Water District the ability to, you know, to have that assistance of us. So we advocate, we advocated for between the $2 to $4 million in water main infrastructure cleaning for that. That was outlined as a priority by Superintendent Clunin. And finally, the last priority that's been out there for a while, was also highlighted in the municipal vulnerability and hazard mitigation plans. Because the Lincoln Wall, so I'm sorry, the Lincoln Street flood mitigation seawall upgrades. I wasn't here back in 2010, but I have heard a lot about the flooding that happened back then, you know, and the importance of really trying to address that, you know, in the infrastructure in the Lincoln Street area. That has a very, very high price tag that won't be really able to be addressed by the town. So again, taking advantage of this, you know, of the significant federal funding out there, we highlighted that as a priority as well. Additionally, in the meeting, we highlighted as, oh, we have priorities on municipal building projects, you know, like the library and community center, you know, a potential upgrade and feasibility study of Station 1, like a highway garage, and also increases in Chapter 90 funding because it's very clear as we'll go through the capital plan, you know, like actually later in the meeting, that we, you know, have a lot of issues out there, and we don't, and we have to be very diligent and responsible with our tax base here. So to address all the needs we have, we can't do it alone. And we are going to have to look, and we are going to have to look to state and federal infrastructure funding to meet those needs, or else we won't be able to. So I just wanted to give an update, like on that meeting, as I mentioned, the congressman and Senator Pacico participated. And it was a really, really good meeting, I thought. So yeah, like in Selectmen Pacico could probably add more, too.
I just want to add that this is the second time that our congressman has reached out to us and met with us. As you know, we met with him maybe in the late fall.
Yes.
You, I, and Dr. Z. I'm glad that he was interested in helping the town. We did, our town administrator did send in some information regarding our needs, and I was impressed that not only did he not delegate it to one of his assistants, but he was familiar with our needs, and he actually asked them some specific questions about it. So I'm impressed. Hopefully, we'll get some help. But it was nice to meet with him.
Mr. Karen?
I have no comments.
I had the opportunity to attend a Zoom town meeting with Congressman Archon Class. And I actually called in, and the question I asked him is if it was possible to assign one of his staff to be a direct liaison if we had questions. And he did assign one of his staff to handle the needs of Dayton as far as requests for financial support. Also, on Saturday, I had the opportunity to speak with Representative Hadad. And she has been a major supporter of Dayton. And she said that she wants to be appraised of projects that Dayton has on the planning, in planning stages, and hopefully, you know, she can help on the House side, with Senator Pacico helping in the Senate to bring some additional funding. Especially, and this comes from the feds all the way down, infrastructure, bridges and roads in particular are a high priority list on the state and federal level. So there's money out there.
So if I can move on, Mr. Chairman? Okay. The other update that I just wanted to provide really quickly, as you know, like we try to take advantage, you know, like as I just mentioned of, we try to take advantage of state and federal grant opportunities that, you know, that have an ability to help address our needs here in town. And one of the needs that have been highlighted by by police and fire in the last few years, is the fact that, like, their IMC system, it's housing, that is, that is actually, that is actually what is called, like, that is what is called, like, that is what's called a, that's what's called a computer-aided dispatch system. It's housing the PD, but the fire department, but the fire department, like, actually, the only way to access it, which they do on a very regular basis, is actually through a VPN. On a VPN, it was a virtual, is a virtual private network. You know, like in the VPN that the fire department has through Comcast, you know, to log into the VPN and to get into fire reports, and to upload reports to the state, you know, and to put information in, like into the town dispatch database, you know, can often, because of reliability, be very slow. So like as we, as we mentioned to the board last August, the state has a community compact grant program. And from March 15th to April 15th, they have a municipal fiber grant application program. So what we've done over the past few weeks, working with Building Commissioner Aguilar, working with the fire, working with the fire chief Lieutenant Cronin, and the folks from TOMP, we actually put in an application this afternoon. It's a $211,000, $211,000 application to is a $211,000 application to connect the station, to connect Fire Station 1, Fire Station 2, and the PD all with fiber. So like everyone will be able to access same information from the same network. And if the fire department is down at Station 1, so if they're down, so if they're down operating out of Station 1 or Station 2, they can get in, so they can get into the IMC and not, and not, actually not have the issues they have right now, not having the issue, not having issues now they're having with communicating with dispatch and the like. So like we've been working, like we actually had to pull the grant, we had to pull the grant application in together fairly quickly, and we, you know, oh, yeah, and we did a pretty good job in our application, and we, like I think like in a few weeks' time, we'll hear whether or not, like our grant was well received, but again, we don't really know until we try. Oh, you know, so we just wanted to take the opportunity to make sure we don't leave stones unturned as we address these issues. So I just wanted to give that update as well.
Thank you. Are there any loose ends as far as the grant applications? Or are they all in in regards to this?
They're all in, oh, yeah, like they're all in, they're all in, I especially want to, I especially want to thank Building Commissioner Aguilar, the fire chief, and actually TOMP. We had a powwow in my, we had a powwow in my office this afternoon, and we pulled it all together, and it was a really good product.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Regarding old business, review, discuss, and act. Review prior budgets, account number 122, Board of Selectmen. Mr. Mullin?
Yes, I'm just gonna pull, hold on a second, I'm sorry. Pull the budget up. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Your recommendation was for $176,442.80. Would you
Yes.
Explain because
Yes, so the
An increase.
Yep. So, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in late January, the Board, the Board of Selectmen approved the departmental request that when, that began the budget process in the Board of Selectmen's budget, and also the Town Administrator's budget as well. And we discussed that at the time. And also, in both budgets, we were able to realize efficiencies in both budgets. And we were able to, we were able, we were able to really cut funding out to really focus on the essentials, like of the operations of both departments. One of the things that we were doing at the same time, however, however, like we were like in non-union, we were in, we were in, we were in non-union contract negotiations with both our executive assistant and administrative assistant, which were finalized, and there were, and there were non-union contracts approved by the board in mid-March. So based on, based on the, on the financial structure of both contracts, we went back and updated the budgets accordingly. And specifically, we had, we, we updated the salary for the administrative assistant to, like represents a two and a half, a two and a half percent increase over FY '22 to the amount of $47,392. Then with the executive assistant, her salary is in both, is included in both the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator's lines. So like, and based on her contract, and based on her contract, we updated both budgets accordingly as well. So what you see before you is, is the true cost of the departmental budgets. And the only changes that have been made, and actually, the Town Administrator's budget and the Board of Selectmen budget has been including the two contracts that were ratified by the board in mid-March.
Thank you. Are there, Mr. Pacico, any questions?
Just a comment that this, this budget is less than what it was a year ago, the request.
Mr. Karen?
Yes, why are we budgeting so much for overtime?
Overtime, so the-
Well, go ahead. When we haven't used it.
So the overtime, the overtime like in both, the Selectmen's overtime and the town administrator's overtime, that, 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 that is primarily used by, by the executive, by the executive assistant to attend Board of, to attend Board of Selectmen meetings.
Right.
So like it's, so it's impossible to predict based on the work week, based on the work week. So based on the work week and also, and also how, and how long some Board of Selectmen meetings will go. So we actually, we try to use one budget before we, we go into the other. So, so like, and you can see just as an example that, like, I'm in FY '22 looking at the town administrator's budget. Like you will, you will see that we have already used up most of that. So like as of the end of March, we've already used up, going into the busy season in terms of meetings, about $188 of that and then we switch. So then when we exhaust that budget, then we use, and then we use the Board of Selectmen's overtime budget. If that makes sense, Mr. Karen?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
And my other question is the, our cellphone education stipend for 2000, 2200?
In the town administrator's budget?
Right.
Yes. That is, that is a contractual provision that includes, I'm just gonna go down to it. That includes, so that actually doesn't include, that does not include a cellphone. The town, the town actually provides me with a cellphone. But what that does include, and includes, I believe, a 12, like I believe a $1,400 vehicle allowance. And then, no, no, I'm sorry, I take that back. A $1,200 vehicle allowance. And then, I, so yeah, $1,200, $1,200 vehicle allowance, which, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like which requires me to use my vehicle for everything.
Right.
And then $1,200 for having my master's degree.
Okay.
I, I do have a question in regards to the overtime budget. You know, these are tight fiscal times. You came before us and asked for an increase for the assistant.
Yes.
And where overtime is one of those things that we have some ability to manage. Would my colleagues entertain a reduction of $1,000 in the overtime of the Board of Selectmen budget? Now, when you said that 2,000, is that just for coverage of the Board of Selectmen meetings?
No, no, like one, also, one of the things we expect here, as we know, we're going through with the new website process. So like which is gonna be an intensive process over the summer. So, so, so the overtime line, which we've already used, like 88% in the town administrator's budget, so and also 86% in, like in the Selectmen budget. We're already pretty close to being, oh, you know, having exhausted both those lines. So like, so, so with the website project upcoming, oh, you know, like, I would just be more cautious on that. That's just my thought.
In fairness to Mr. Mullin, we did have a discussion about that. And I, I get it. I'm just wondering, is there any wiggle room here? Saving $1,000, a little bit here, a little bit there.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes.
Yeah, I noticed in the past in 2020, fiscal year 2020, overtime in account number 122, we spent $2,265.75 fiscal year 2021, we spent $2,846. And this year, we have, we have, rest of April, May, and June, we have a balance of $270.58. So I personally would not support a reduction in that account, the overtime monies.
Any other questions? I will then entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend in account number 122, the amount of $176,442.80.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is count number 124, Town Administrator.
I, I, yes, Mr. Chairman, actually the same, the same explanation for this budget, the same explanation that I provided for the Board of Selectmen budget applies for the Town Administrator's budget. So we went back and updated the Town Administrator's budget because as I mentioned, half of the executive assistant salary is in the Town Administrator's budget. Excuse me, you will remember at the beginning of this process, we actually cut out the $2,500 for paid intern line item that we had. And then also, even though I heard, I heard, I heard a little bit from the Board at the time, I also cut out the sick vacation time buyback provision that I, that is actually like included in my contract, but I wanted to be diligent with our budget and with what we spend. So that has a value, it had a value in, I think FY '20 of, of around 25, hold on a second, I'm screwing this up as I talk, but that had a value of around $2,500 the last time it was used in FY '20. But, but it won't be used this year and we're, and I propose that we don't use it. And I don't take advantage of it next year as well. So I just wanted to point that out. But everything else is the same. And again, the only thing we did update is a budget to, to reflect the negotiated salary with the executive assistant.
So that's why it's, oh, I'm sorry. That's why it's a 9.4% increase?
The, I just want to pull. Yes. So, also the, the executive assistance, the executive assistance total, the executive assistance, the executive assistance total non-union negotiated salary that was approved and ratified would be $70,000 going into, going into FY '23, whereas in FY '22, the salary was $64,000. But it also includes a consolidation of HR functions that, that, oh, you know, that was recommended by our independent auditors and approved by the Board as well.
Are there any other questions?
No.
If not, I will accept the motion.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend on account number 124, Town Administrator's in the amount of $170,260.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull?
Aye.
Motion passes. Data processing, count number 155?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So I believe at the beginning of March, we talked about the data processing budget extensively. So one of the lines, like in 5302 relating to computer, relating to assessors' computer, relating to assessors' computer fees. The assessors actually proposed, I just want to pull it up. Hold on. The Board of Assessors actually proposed funding that line at $15,200, I don't know why he's doing, okay. At $15,296.74. In my initial recommendation that I provided, so I have actually, so I actually did propose originally funding that at $10,296. Like in going back, going back and talking with the principal assessor, with the conservation agent and, talking with the principal assessor, the conservation agent and the conservation agent and the building commissioner, the technology, the techno, the technology in terms of mapping that the, that the $5,000 would fund is actually a really important technology that we should have. It's location mapping software. It's a cloud-based software that would actually like allow the assessors' office, the building commissioner, and the conservation agent to really, so, sort of, so to really have additional tools. Oh, you know, like in looking at properties, at looking at buildings, at identifying wetlands and so forth. And I know Jim is here. Like if you want to hear more about-
Say again?
The specifics.
Hello, everyone. Hello, Dyton. Welcome, Selectmen Karen. So, yes, what we found is that our current system is unreliable. The graphics are pixelated, which means it's difficult for us to decipher what we're looking at. And the options available to us are limited. So with some of the newer softwares that use different technologies, especially the cloud-based ones, which happen in real time for, for most part, we have an unprecedented tool at our fingertips. Administrator Mullin said that conservation, building, but highway also uses it. We also use it extensively through stormwater to find out which way water's flowing, where headwalls are, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it seems like a lot of money, but it, it actually will help us before we get out in the field, sort of determine what things are doing. So when we get out there, we can work more efficiently. The last part of it, which is perhaps the most important, is this particular brand will interface with my permitting software. So once we can integrate that, all the users, be it contractors, taxpayers, et cetera, will be able to interface the GIS along with my permitting software when they, when they query it for a particular property. So it may also help with some of the workload from the realtors or people who are looking at properties, where they'll be able to see not only the information, the property card, the permits, but they'll also bring in the overlay on the GIS. So it is, it is, you know, a significant amount of money, so to speak, in a tight year. But it's a tool that we really should have at our fingertips. And it will help us expand and grow our online presence through interfacing and integration.
Mr. Aguilar, thank you. I just happened to think the Dyton Industrial Development Commission is holding a business expo sometime this summer. One of the major goals of that commission is to work with developers, to bring developers and businesses into the town. And I see that as something that we could share with them as they look for areas.
Sure.
There is currently a business looking for 22,000 square feet to build-
Right.
Some industry in town. And it would be nice to have access to something that, quickly, that we could make suggestions.
It will, it will. And we, we've sort of struggled with this particular topic in the past. We've gone through a couple of different vendors, they haven't really worked out. So we're sort of behind the eight ball with some of our other communities. So I, I think it's warranted, albeit I understand it's a tight year and we need to be mindful of that. But I think it's a useful tool, especially where we're looking for other revenue sources. We're talking about solar on, on different properties. We do have some interest in some larger parcels by businesses. So I think the timing is good. And if we can make the, the numbers work, I, I would certainly hope that you would support it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
I have no questions.
Mr. Karen?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't want to be tedious about this, but I'm gonna be. Why are we budgeting in account number 5304, $6,000, when we still have $3,800 unspent? When in the previous years, we never came close to $6,000?
Yes, that's a very good question. That's a very good question, I Selectman Karen. That, so, so that line, as you'll note, has been, I believe, has been funded, has been funded at $6,000 for the last few years, even though the total draw on the line item has been less. The total draw on the line item has been less because we, up until actually last week, had been using a website, had been using a website platform that was relatively inexpensive and only cost about, I think it's roughly $4,000 a year. So like as of last week, because of accessibility issues, and also because, like of the longstanding issues that all of our residents have actually had with our current website. We contracted with, with a new webs, we contracted with a new, we contracted with a new website company.
Okay.
Like in the total, oh, oh, yeah, in the total, I mean, the total costs, the total cost of our new website platform going into FY '23, we're actually going to be needing that entire $6,000 at this point. Where I do understand in prior years, like we have, we haven't actually needed that entire $6,000. Oh, you know, like and it took me really, I mean, a good year to understand what line items, oh, you know, I may have been overfunded, if you will. Oh, you know, like and up until now, I would admit that, that that line item had been overfunded. But based on our new contract, we're gonna need every bit of that going into FY '23.
Is that the same thing for 5307 as well, the $2,000?
Oh, 5307, no, that is, that is a different story. Last year, we, based on the, so based on the building permitting software that the, that the building commissioner had mentioned, when I, when I got here last year, like I noticed, you know, like in conjunction and partnership with the building, with the building commissioner, that, so we, so we had a very, very high-quality building permitting software system. But, so only the building department, oh, you know, was actually using it. And in the implementation of the software, we, we have planned for the building department to use it. But we also had to, we also had to set up user accounts for the Board of Health, for the Board of Health to be able to access it, for, so, so not only the Board of Health, but also planning on conservation as well. Like and you notice it, actually if you look at those line items as well, that the user fees, it's a thousand dollar per user fee.
Right.
Like and those line items hasn't been used as well. And that's because the, the rollout of that process and the bringing everyone on board, oh, you know, has, has frankly taken a little longer than we expected. And I think the first part of September, like, the first part of September, I created a, I created a permitting review team with all, with the stakeholders from every department. Like as part of that team. Like and we've been working to actually implement that, you know, again. So it didn't, it wasn't able to happen in this fiscal year, but we do know because we continue to meet that in FY '23, it's definitely-
Definitely gonna happen?
Yes.
Okay, no further questions.
No further questions. At this time, I will accept a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen on account number 155 data process and recommend that budget in the amount of $71,706.28.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is also an aye. Motion passes. Um, harbor master, two-ninety, account number two-ninety-five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to-
Is Mr. Moreno?
No, he's not here tonight, Mr. Chairman, but I do have some information.
Okay.
Um, uh, so like we have, uh, Jesus, I'm sorry, this is the problem when you give me a computer. Um, uh, so af- uh, so after the last, um, after the last, after the last conversation and discussion on this, we went back, uh, you know, and did some research, and we found out that, uh, what has actually happened here, um, oh, oh, you know, like is the, oh, you know, like, and what has actually occurred is that there exists a gray area between our employees who, oh, you know, who are, who are either full, who are either full or part-time employees, and those employees were stipendant employees. Uh, the harbor master and the assistant harbor master, and the assistant harbor masters are stipendant employees. Uh, so there's never really been any rules of the road, uh, that, oh, you know, that have guided their budget requests, because, oh, you know, when we talk about employees, basically, uh, we talked, we talked, we talked about our non-union employees, we talked about, uh, so we talked about our non-union employees, our union employees, uh, we talked about our department head, but we really never, oh, you know, there has always existed a gray area, uh, as it relates, uh, to, oh, you, oh, you know, like any wage increases, uh, any wage increases year over year, uh, for our stipendant employees. Uh, so this is where, oh, you know, the, oh, you know, the im- where we've seen the impact of these gray areas, because no, oh, you know, expectations, uh, here to the harbor master about, oh, you know, any cost of living, wage increases whatever conveyed. Uh, so we, uh, uh, so in this year's budget, uh, the harbor master, uh, um, he, he was under the understanding that for the past, uh, so, uh, for the past two years, for fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-one, uh, for FY twenty-two and twenty-one, uh, that non-union employees got two percent increases. Uh, so having understood that, uh, he went back and asked, uh, like for two percent increases, uh, like on his stipend, and the stipends for the assistant harbor masters as well. Oh, you know, like, and that created an area that we really, uh, or a situation that we never really dealt with before, so hence it prompted the question, uh, that is really before us now. Uh, so like the board really has really two ways, uh, you know, to go, um, uh, you know, because we didn't, so because we didn't real- uh, so because we didn't communicate any sort of expectations for increases, uh, for non- uh, for stipendant employees, we can just leave the stipend as it is. Uh, uh, the second, uh, the second direction, uh, the second direction that the board could go, oh, oh, you know, like it, uh, uh, let's see, I forget what I just said, what, so, yeah, yeah, so you can leave the stipend alone, and the stipend is what it is. The other, the other direction that the board could go in, uh, is it could, uh, oh, you know, like, uh, like, uh, is that it could give, uh, as has been proposed by the harbor master, uh, three, uh, three, three years, uh, of the two percent, two percent increases, uh, which is an additional sixty dollars in total, oh, and have that figure, uh, 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 in the budget as, as a board of selectman recommendation. The last option that the board could consider, uh, that the board could consider, especially, especially based on the fact that it, that the board, that the board has also, that the board has also approved two percent stipend increases for elected officials, uh, like is to, uh, like is to include, like a two percent stipend increase, uh, for fiscal year twenty-three only, uh, like for the harbor master department. Uh, and the only thing, the only thing for that is if we went in that direction, in fairness, we do have another employee who's a, who's a stipend employee as the ADA coordinator. Uh, so in fairness, if we do, and if the board does want to deal with a stipend percentage increase, uh, like for just FY twenty-three, uh, you know, then, uh, then in fairness, we should look, uh, like at the ADA coordinator, oh, you know, two percent increase as well. So those are really based on what I found in the research I've done because of the gray areas, oh, you know, those are like the three, uh, the three ways we can move forward, but I just wanted some direction from the board as well.
Ms. Pacheco, do you have any questions?
Uh, well, uh, more of a comment. We haven't given anybody an increase in their stipends, and Mr. Woods will verify this, for the last three or four years, I believe, and maybe two or three meetings ago, Selectman Karen wasn't present, but we decided that we're going to give everybody a two percent, uh, slight, increase in their stipends to show, uh, their, that the town appreciates that, the, the work that they're doing. I'm in favor of increasing this, uh, stipend two percent, but I, I, I don't, I'm not in favor of going retroactive. He would have gone before the finance committee, would have gone before us in the finance committee, and he would have heard the same thing that we did to all the other boards, and not give them any increase. So, uh, I'm just in favor of the, uh, the two percent, uh, increase for the, for him as well as his assistants.
Mr. Karen?
Well, I agree with, uh, with Ken, um, but my other question is, and I don't know who's going to answer this, is why do we need two assistant harbor masters?
The, so, um, there is act- uh, so, uh, uh, so from what I understand, the harbor masters are stipended positions as well, so, uh, right, uh, so, uh, so right now, we're but, so, so give or take the fifteen hundred dollars, uh, like actually envisions, so three assistant harbor masters with, uh, with stipends of five dollars, with five hundred dollars each.
Right, but wh- why do we have two assistant harbor masters? Do we need two assistants? Do we even need a harbor master, I guess, is my question. I- i- if that's the case, if we do, why do we need two assistants?
Uh, uh-
Not that five hundred dollars is a lot of money, but it's a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, and I don't disagree with you. Uh, uh, so if we have a harbor master program and we, uh, so based on it being twenty-twenty-two and everything, oh, you know, like, and everything happening, we really should have two people on a boat. Oh, you know, I mean, like, it's no secret, there have been issues on the water, oh, you know, like, and we need people to back, oh, you know, to be able to back up different type of allegations if they happen. Uh, but I mean, in terms of, uh, so that, so that's the answer, having more, uh, oh, you know, kind of having multiple assistant harbor masters. Uh, like I will say, the, oh, you know, the question about the need for a harbor master in general, and how we deal with that, uh, yeah, like is a question we, oh, like, oh, we could really look into and consider with, uh, with the PD and see, uh, how exactly it's happening, if there's the things we can do different and so forth. Oh, and we, uh, yeah, and that, if the board wishes, we could definitely look into that.
I don't agree that we should have two harbor masters, assistants. I don't think we need them. I'm a boater, and, n- not that I've ever been pulled over, but I, I, we go to Newport, and, um, there's one harbor master with, by himself on a boat, and that's a lot of traffic compared to Dayton, which I don't think you need two on a boat. Uh, uh, maybe you can't answer this.
No, 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 one's to know.
I don't know.
Yep.
Um, but, again, it's, it's five hundred bucks is five hundred bucks. Uh, so I agree with Ken, and, and I think we should cut one of the harbor masters' assistants.
Uh, Selectman Hall, uh, Chairman, um, may I speak?
Yes.
So, um, when I first became a selectman, myself as well as, uh, selectwoman Gulon had an opportunity to go out with a harbor master, uh, to see exactly what they do. I still don't fully understand what they do. Uh, but you should, and both of you, I know that you, uh, Selectman Hall, you've expressed an interest, and perhaps you want to, want to do that. I do think there is a question of liability, there are, there can be issues, and for, I mean, the people that he's going to be dealing with are probably, uh, people who have been drinking, uh, on the boat. Normally, people, you know, are do- are fine. When we were with him, uh, there were people that, you can't go too fast on the water because it impacts the other boats, and it impacts the boats that are in the harbor. Uh, so I'm not a poster, but I, I do think, uh, Mr. Karen has brought up a valid question. We need to know how often they go out.
Mm-hmm.
We need to know, uh, how many people they've actually stopped or, or whatever, I mean, if, uh, we all know that there's problems out there, there's problems everywhere, so, uh, they're not, it's not limited just to land, so it's on water, but I, I'd be interested in hearing from the police department to see how often, uh, they have to stop somebody. Uh, and, so I'm still supporting, uh, I actually think it's, isn't it three assistants that we have?
Yeah, yeah, the fifteen hundred actually represents three assistants at five hundred dollars stipends apiece.
Right. That's crazy. Uh, why is, um, not the jump, but the equipment repairs and maintenance, are they budgeting five thousand dollars when the last few years, they haven't even come close to that kind of money? And I think it's a fairly new boat, so what do they-
Yeah, the, uh, the increase in five thousand dollars, it is, uh, uh, so like it, so it is a fairly new boat, we're in year five, is, it, so, yeah, and I believe we're in year five of the boat, and, so at year five, so at year five, the harbor master is proposing, uh, to, to sandblast and redo the hull, I believe? Is it, so I'm not a boating person, but I believe the, so the bottom portion is the hull.
Bonicles-
Yes.
So that would be a one-time expense.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe it's older than five years, and if you don't mind me asking, Mr. Woods, uh, we didn't buy a new boat, right? We didn't-
No, it's a second-hand boat that we bought from someone down the cape, and Mr. Marino was here. You want me to come to the podium?
Certainly.
Chairman, yep.
Yes, Mr. Woods, please come on.
I just think it's good that everybody comes to the podium, because-
You're right.
... most of the meetings at home, and it's hard to hear.
Yeah, and I agree.
On behalf of Mr. Marino, the harbor master, who, uh, is doing a very fine job. I hope he's watching. But he is doing a good job, and the additional money that they need to do the bottom of the boat is preventative maintenance, and I think that, you know, it's, it's a good thing that we do. Uh, did we need this forty thousand dollar boat back in the day? I don't think so, but we get it anyway. We gave Berkeley our old boat, and they're still using it, and it works fine. Um, I won't say nothing about the assistant harbor masters, it's not my job, but the, the five thousand dollars to do the boat motor, I mean, the bottom of the boat, it's preventative maintenance, and it's a very nice boat, and if we don't maintain it, then it's just going to fall apart. Uh, I better, I better just zip it from there. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Can I continue?
Enrique, I'm sorry, you do.
Continue?
Yes, Mr. Karen?
Okay, thank you. Uh, professional and technical fees, twelve hundred fifty dollars. Uh, we budgeted two fifty, we haven't touched it?
Yes.
Budgeted two fifty in two thousand twenty-two, never spent it?
Yes.
Why are we spending so much now?
Uh, so because the last few years, actually, uh, you know, we never, as you mentioned, have, um, have spent anything out of there, which means we haven't done any type of training at all. Uh, so like we really wanted to invest, uh, based on incidents that we've actually had recently, uh, we really want to invest in training, uh, like for the harbor master staff, and that would, uh, that total of, uh, twelve, um, sorry, um, so twelve fifty would help us actually fund training, where, uh, as the budget actually shows, there's been actually no training whatsoever done.
Okay. And about the thousand fifty for, uh, gasoline and diesel, that we don't come close to spending that either.
No. Yeah. That reflects the increase in costs.
We, can't be that much for an increase.
So, no, and nothing was even-
Touched in two thousand twenty-two yet.
Yeah. I don't-
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna-
That's a really good point.
I'm going to suggest that we continue this and have, invite the, uh, harbor master into our next meeting. We still have time before we meet with the FENCOM to make our, our recommendations.
Meet you on the twenty-seventh.
On the twenty-seventh, so-
Would you want to, um, postpone this, or do you want just to make a motion, no recommendation at this time?
I would like to make a motion that we continue it, so that we can, uh, Mr. Karen has some, uh, valid questions, and to get them answered by the harbor master, so if he, if your entertaining motions, if I can make a motion to-
I, I will, I just, before I do that, I'd, in, in speaking to Chief McDonald, and I would like for him to also be present when we do meet, he did have some public safety concerns, um, lack of training, coverage, and increase of violent incidents, um, from what we're used to in the past, um, not physical altercations, but situations that became somewhat of concern, uh, for the harbor master or his assistant in, in meeting, you know, confronting people. I'd also be curious to hear what they do in Somerset, how many people they have, um, on their boats, and how they man their, their boats as well. Um, any further questions? Mr. Ch- Pacheco, I'll entertain that motion at this time.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that on account number two-ninety-five, harbor master, that we continue that budget until, uh, April twenty-seventh, and that we invite the harbor master as well as the, uh, chief of police.
Mr. Karen, do I have a-
Second.
-have a, a motion and a second? All those in favor, Mr. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Selectman Hall is an aye. Motion passes. Um, next is sewer.
So I have to apologize, Mr. Chairman, and I didn't, uh, want to get Mr. Woods all worked up for nothing, um, but the inclusion of the sewer budget, um, was a typo, the sewer budget was approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, library, I, I know it's, the librarian was present on Zoom.
Yes, I'm just going to pull the budget up, Mr. Chairman. Um, wait, I'm sorry, I should just look at the number. Thank you. There we go. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to share my screen, so everyone, this Jocelyn. And I believe we're also joined by trustee Maitzen as well. Yes.
Jocelyn, can you hear us? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, um, so ba- so basically, my recommendations, Mr. Chairman, um, so unto the board, uh, they, uh, they very much mirror, uh, what I believe the, the library director and the library trustees have proposed. Um, there is an increase in the page line item, uh, to, to better help address the needs, um, and the staffing needs that exist between, um, the, uh, 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 the cu- uh, the current children's room, um, and the modular unit, uh, which we're operating with, with, uh, with staff having to go back and forth and having, I, uh, I, uh, yeah, oh, yeah, and having staffing, um, and having staffing dedicated to both locations, uh, which is a challenge. We know it's, uh, absolutely not ideal, um, uh, and we're actively working as a town with the library trustees, um, and with the library director and staff to, uh, to be able to deal with that, hopefully, but, um, Joc, is there anything else you wanted to add specifically?
Um, no, um, I, on the expense lines, I took from different places in order to meet our accreditation requirements for the, um, materials line, which is fifty-five-ten. That number is eighteen percent of the budget. We are supposed to spend nineteen percent for a community our size, but with the help of the friends of the, the impopular library, we're able to achieve that.
What line item was that? Fifty-five?
Fifty-five-ten.
Fifty-five-ten.
Books and magazines.
Books and magazines.
Why are we scheduling so- oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Karen.
So why are we scheduling so much in overtime? When, again, we haven't come close to anywhere near the thousand dollars that you have?
No, we haven't, and I have that as a question for, um, you know, the staff typically opts to get paid for cop time. Two of the staff get, um, a little bit extra for that due to labor standard law. So we try not to use overtime where possible, but there are times when we have.
So does that have to be a?
Earlier this year, we, we did.
Right, but you still have five hundred and three dollars remaining in, in two thousand twenty-two.
That first five hundred and three dollars was eaten up within, like, two staff overtime sessions, and that was months ago. So I am very cautious with that account, because it can, it'll go in a second if I let it.
Isn't your job not to let it, though?
Um, we are trying to operate two different locations with four staff. It's been tough.
But you have additional hours for the pa, the page, so?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and what's the buyback for, the sick leave bonus?
I have someone retiring at the end of next fiscal year.
And it's gonna cost twenty thousand?
That is the contractual amount.
Okay. The travel for one hundred dollars, we haven't even spent anything the last several years.
We haven't, we haven't had many in-person meetings until very recently, I had my first one today.
Okay. And, um, equipment replacement for nine hundred dollars?
That is for, we've replaced the laptop and printers and?
We, we?
Whenever something breaks.
So you've already replaced it?
No, I haven't. But every year, I try, in order to keep our staff equipment working to where it needs to be, I try to replace one staff machine at least every year.
Okay, no further questions.
Thank you. In regards to the overtime, um, as we go forward, the lease?
Yes.
For the trailer?
Yes.
It's a one-year lease, correct?
Um, uh, so it's a one-year lease with an option to extend into the second, so like, and we have budgeted, um, in the public buildings account, to take the second, uh, to take the second year of the lease.
Okay, thank you. And in defense of that five hundred that's still left, we had a remarkable response by the town, Dr. Z, Mr. Pacheco, during the move, and helping to move books from the old library, set it up at both locations. I would, I couldn't imagine what that would have been if we had paid those people overtime. So that five hundred dollars that's still left would have been gone. And they were gracious enough not to be upset that we helped move all those books. I, I believe they were quite thankful.
That's not something that happens again.
Well, it won't happen next year.
Can I give an example of something library staff has faced in the last month?
Yes.
Um, I had, I expected death in my family, and then got COVID right after that, and I was out for two weeks. That coincided at the same time that a staff member was away, traveling internationally. And that line is there to help us get through. In a normal year, there's little room for error. When someone calls in sick, and we need to scatter and rework our schedules, and I am so fortunate that I have a staff who is willing to do that, and take care of each other, and be flexible. When we're trying to run two separate locations, and I'm down to two people, and this board doesn't even, isn't even happy that I have one person staffing each location, they, I, I just, I think that we're doing the best we can with what we have in order to not face an impact to the services we provide.
I just think a thousand dollars is a lot of money to budget overtime, when the first year, you, you did one sixty, seventy dollars, five hundred dollars.
Because my staff doesn't typically take overtime.
So if they're not typically taking overtime, why are we budgeting a thousand dollars for overtime?
We are, because if they decide to get paid out in overtime, because they all were, I've been here the least amount of time, fourteen years, we also have a lot of benefited time on the books. So I'm sure I have staff members who will be struggling to use their benefit of time, because they've been here for so long, and have accrued so much, that sometimes we actually need to pay them, because they have so much time on the books that they're trying to use. It's not an ideal situation. I'd rather not deficit spend that, and I might need that because my page has been really stepping up and helping us cover. So that, that line item might be a cushion for her to get us through the rest of the year. Her line item, it has been, she doesn't have much time, much, excuse me, much of a balance on the books, and there's still a couple months to go.
All right, no further questions.
Mr. Vares, please don't get the impression that we don't appreciate what you and your staff are doing. We most certainly do. We are facing tough budget times.
I, I understand that, I completely understand that, I, um.
One of the things that I want to make clear to all the department heads is that because we ask tough questions, doesn't, please don't take that as a criticism, what we are going to be looking forward, going forward, is asking the tough questions, and asking the department heads to defend their budgets.
And that's what I was doing.
Okay, thank you, but.
I was defending my budget.
I, I, just, just because we ask, that doesn't mean that we don't believe in the work that you and your staff are doing, or?
I understood, I, I'm defending my budget.
Okay, thank you.
As you said.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes.
Yeah, I also, I want to thank Mrs. Tavarez for the, the great job that you're doing with the, the library. This is the fourth budget that I've worked with you, and I know you're fiscally conservative, you monitor your budget closely, and when I see that you haven't spent the money, in my mind, anyway, that's good, uh, there's been no need for it, but you've had some tough times since we've got the modular, uh, so hopefully, things will change in the future, and things will get better, uh, but I just want to let you know that I appreciate all the work that you and your staff do for the town. I do have a second question.
I appreciate that, that's not, you know, I understand, you don't, I, I'm not looking for that, but the staff is stretched, that's all I can say.
So I do have another question, is for the town administrator, there's a difference in your recommendation, as well as, as the budget, so what, what is the recommendation now that you're seeking?
Uh, yeah, the recommendation, my recommendation that I discussed with, with Mr. Vares, is around, is around the line item fifty-one oh seven, relating to the increase, um, the increase for the pages, sorry, um, the increase in the page, so hours, um, what, um, what Ms. Vares was proposing in her budget was the, was actually having the ability, I believe, to bring in, um, an additional page, I believe, uh, so on what, so really, really compromise was to increase the current page hours from twelve, uh, from twelve hours a week to fifteen hours a week, uh, but that also, that increase also includes a minimum wage increase as well, based, oh, you know, because our page, uh, pages have always made minimum wage, uh, and the minimum wage has been increasing, uh, so we have to increase, um, uh, so like, we have to increase the, uh, the funding in that line item accordingly as well. But generally speaking, my recommendation would increase the number of hours per week that the page works to provide the assistance that Mr. Vares was mentioning, uh, increasing those hours from twelve to fifteen hours a week.
So, Mr. Mullin, your recommendation, two hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars and ten cents?
Yes, sir.
Unless there have any further questions, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend, on account number six-ten, library, the requested budget of two hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars and ten cents.
Do I have a second?
No.
Chairman will step down to second the motion. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
No.
Mr. Hall is aye. The motion passes. Next item on the agenda is selectmen's reports. Mr. Pacheco?
Yes.
Capitol Outlay?
Yeah, so as the board knows, I've been a member of the Capitol Outlay Committee, I'm their liaison person, I'm not a voting member. We've met probably seven or eight times, I'm not sure exactly, we met with each individual department, we've, they, we've asked and requested a five-year plan, capital expense plan for five years, and we mainly spent our time on fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. We did discuss future items, and some of the items that the request of a twenty-twenty-three, we pushed off to the future. So before you is our recommendations, as to what we think should be part of the budget and part of the, at the annual town meeting. For example, the Board of Health were recommending that they get roll-off containers, that they replace them, is twelve thousand dollars, and we're gonna, hopefully, we're gonna be able to use free cash. For those that don't know, we have over four hundred thousand dollars left on free cash. Second, we hold with the feasibility study, and this is fifty, oh, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and we're asking that, that come out of E and D. The fire departments have several requests, fire station feasibility study, either of a hundred fifty thousand dollars, come out of free cash or cap, capital stabilization. They have also requested self-contained breathing apparatus, RIT packs, this is very important that we main, that we maintain these, we have them up-to-date equipment for our firefighters, and we're asking the county to use their offer funds that, that will be given to the town in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. And that actually is our number-one priority, as far as items that we think that we need to purchase. Fire department is also asking for a new ambulance of three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, and we're asking that come out of the ambulance fund. Highway department has several requests, they're requesting a dump truck in the amount of a hundred seventy thousand dollars, and that's either gonna come out of free cash or capital, capital stabilization. They're also asking that William Street, Old William Street Godrail, which is forty-three thousand dollars, that also come out of free cash or capital stabilization, and they're asking for a one-ton dump truck, at, in the amount of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and three dollars, and that will come out of free cash or capital stabilization. The library is asking for a feasibility study in the amount of a hundred forty thousand dollars, to come out of free cash or capital stabilization. Parks and Rec, uh, court facility, school lane in Lane Field, parking of the, paving of the parking areas in the amount of seventy-five thousand, nine hundred dollars, that will come out of free cash or capital stabilization. And the police department is asking for a new patrol vehicle in the amount of sixty-four thousand dollars, and seal coating, the line painting, that hasn't been done, it's my understanding that the pavement has been sealed in six years, it needs to be done every five years, so in order to maintain it. Now, I, I know it's overwhelming when you look at this budget, but there were items that were presenting to us that the Capitol, uh, L.A. committee rejected, that we didn't think that this time, selectmen, hell, myself, we used often wants and needs, and we wanted to make sure we did, we were dealing with the needs of the, these departments, and not necessarily just the wants. So that would be our recommendation. Obviously, we're gonna present this to the FENCOM, as well as the Board of Selectmen will be, with their recommendations, and then whatever's left, we'll be bringing it to the residents at the annual town meeting on June sixth.
June sixth.
So, that's my report.
Thank you. Having attended several of the Capitol Outlay meetings, uh, this group has worked tirelessly to put together a priority list, and at the top of their priority list is public safety and schools. And I'm excited that not only are they prioritizing our needs, but they're also coming up with plans and timelines, uh, that, and, and looking for funding sources, so we're not just spinning our wheels. There is a plan, now it's going to work and coming up with the money to make it happen, and some of these really have to happen. Dayton Water District met on April seventh. Negotiations with the town of Somerset continue over the purchase of the Brook Street well. The district will be going out to bid for building materials for the Main Street Road Water Construction Project. The commissioner said it will take twelve weeks for this to be completed, putting the construction start date for the Main Street, um, project to late July, early August. The project will begin at the intersection of Main and Pleasant Street and conclude at Williams and Main. Sidewalk construction will be on the northern side of Main Street. The annual water district election will be held on May sixteenth at their Williams Street office between the hours of noon and seven P.M. The only candidate is Eric Horricks, who is running for reelection. The closing date for candidates to submit their nomination papers was April fourth. The district's annual water main flushing program will start Monday, April eighteenth, and run through Friday, May sixth. Most flushing will be done eight P.M. to three A.M., with some spot flushing between nine A.M. and two P.M. Water may be discolored and water pressure lower during the flushing period. And the annual meeting to approve the water district's budget will be May twenty-sixth at six P.M. at the Dayton Middle School. Unless I have any further questions, we'll move on to new business. First item is review, discuss, and act, close the warrant for the annual town meeting. Um, Mr. Mullin, do you?
So yes, um, I believe that the first part of March, the Board of Selectmen opened the warrant, uh, so now, uh, based, based on the calendar that the Board of, so approved, if the Board could vote to close the warrant, um, the, the deadline for all warrant articles submissions was this afternoon, uh, we have received a number, um, of, uh, we, uh, we have, we've received a number of them, uh, so now, over the next, um, two weeks, uh, so we'll be putting all of them, we'll be putting all the proposed warrant articles together in the draft, um, and at the April twenty-seventh meeting, we'll have a draft, uh, we will have a list in the draft of the, of the proposed warrant articles for the Board's review.
Now, beginning the decision this evening to postpone a decision on the harbor master?
Yes.
That is, does that apply to the warrant, or is it just the written, um, request?
So, so yeah, the annual operating budget, like, is, the annual operating? So, so, yeah, the annual operating budget, like, is, the annual operating budget is inherently included in the warrant. What we're really talking about in terms of the articles, like, all, like, all the other articles, all, you know, like, all, like, either for capital projects, you know, there's one, there's one petition, there's one citizen's petition, I believe, that, that's been submitted. There were proposed warrant articles from the CPC as well. So now, over the next, over the next two weeks, we'll be, we'll be compiling them, putting them all into one, like, actually, one draft form, like, Ms. Brady will be doing that, and then we'll, I will come back before you on the twenty-seventh with the draft of that.
Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
Yeah, I do have one question. I just want to make sure that the senior abatement, the increase from five-hundred to a thousand is one of those warrant articles?
Yes, absolutely in there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Karen?
No, no questions.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the warrant for the annual town meeting.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen close the warrant for the annual town meeting.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Motion passes. Review, discuss, and act, Town Hall HVAC Gas Furnace Replacement Contract. Mr. Mullin?
Uh, yes.
Do you wish to summarize, or?
So, yeah, like, at the, at the special town meeting, there were two warrant, there were two warrant articles approved. This, um, uh, the, uh, so, uh, so, so this contract relates to actually implementing the project that includes replacing the, I'm sorry, the, the town, the Town Hall HVAC system. It's a five-ton unit that serves the front main level of the building. We put that, we put it out to bid, uh, like, and we followed all the procurement requirements. We had a number of bids, but based on the procurement rules and the lowest bidder, who attended the pre-bid meeting, that bidder is, uh, he's Performance Plumbing and Heating out of Medway, and all their paperwork was in line. They bid for the HVAC project in the amount of ninety-four, ninety-four-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. So what's before you is a proposed contract with them to carry out the project.
Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
I have no questions.
Mr. Karen?
No, sir.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept or award the contract to Performing Plumbing Heating, Nine Bramble Road, Medway, for the aggregate cost of nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars for the train, ninety-seven percent, two-speed, multi-position gas furnace.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the Town Hall HVAC Gas Furnace Replacement Contract with Performance Plumbing and Heating from Medway, Mass., not to exceed nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and to be completed by June third, twenty-twenty-two.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Mr. Hall is an aye. We have the review, discuss, and act on the mini-split heat A.C. unit contract. Mr. Mullin?
Yeah, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, a very same, a very same story here. This was another project, uh, for the cable office, um, that was proposed, that was proposed and approved at annual town meeting. I do, uh, uh, yeah, like, yeah, this, uh, this one is all, this one would also be awarded to the low bidder, uh, which, which is Performance, and, hold on a second, I'm just going through my notes, but, um, this, this project would be, um, so this award would be in the amount of eleven-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars, and I do, yeah, like, I do want to thank Building Commissioner Agua for his work on this too. He's been, uh, he's been a very active in leading this, uh, whole effort, whole effort on both projects forward. So I recommend that as well, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
I have no questions.
Mr. Karen?
No, sir.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the mini-split heat slash A.C. unit contract with Performance Plumbing Heating from Medway, Mass., in the amount not to exceed eleven-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty dollars and to be completed by June third, twenty-twenty-two.
Mr. Karen, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Next item on the agenda, review, discuss, and act, facilities request by the Taunton Area Vietnam Vets Cruise Night. Mr. Mullin?
Uh, so this, uh, so this is the, this was the annual request, Mr. Chairman, uh, for cruise nights, you'll see that all the sign-offs have been, have been achieved and secured, as I was coming before, they do. The Taunton Vietnam Veterans Association also has provided proof of insurance, which, which is a good thing as well. So it's before you for your consideration.
Are the nights, uh, June twenty-fifth, July twenty-third, and August twenty-seventh?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
No, I, I know that Mr. Rosario is here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rosario.
But I have no questions, and he's been here in the past. They, they have their insurance. My understanding is there's never been any problem all the times. I've attended some of them, not all of them, but it's a great opportunity.
We've been doing it for, I don't know, twelve years, and, uh, it's been a good time, and, you know, for the elderly and all that, it's really a good time, and absolutely that's.
Why'd you have to mention the elderly?
Is that?
Did you mention the elderly? It's good for the elderly. They happen to play music from the sixties and seventies, and some music from the fifties.
We're all getting up there in age.
I'm with you. I'm here. I hear you. But the Villaniers usually, it's the Villaniers that usually play, and it's, they play a lot of the fifties, sixties, and seventies.
Yeah, I, so, do what group, it's not something higher than, very low.
No Led Zeppelin, no.
The guys, they do handbirds and uplots, and it all goes to the scholarships for the Taunton Area High Schools, not just Taunton, just, like, over Taunton, Rainham, and all that, so, yeah, it's really a good time.
It is.
Now, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Karen, do you have any questions?
I know, sir.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the facilities request from the Taunton Area Vietnam Vets Cruise Nights and that we waive any fees.
Mr. Karen?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall? Aye. Next, is there anyone from the Prince Edward Society present? We have before us this evening a request for Saturday, July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, by the Prince Henry Society, a family fair and car show. I don't see, are there any permitting fees required?
They're asking any fees be waived. It's a nonprofit group.
Yes.
And they have insurance.
I'll entertain a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the facilities request from the Prince Edward Society Family Fair and Car Show.
Mr. Karen?
Excuse me, and waive the fees.
And also waive the fees. Mr. Karen?
Second.
I have a, um, excuse me. Mr. Pacheco, motion?
Yeah, I'll, aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Next, review, discuss, and act, facilities request, Papa Squash Craft Vendor Fair. Is there anyone representing Papa Squash here this evening? On May seventh, Papa Squash is holding a craft and vendor fair at Town Hall. I, I note that the fire chief needs to approve the layout of this. Do you know if that was completed?
Mr. Ag, yeah, I think.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, so, yeah, I, I made that note because they intend to occupy the rear of Town Hall and barricade the rear of Town Hall so no vehicular traffic can enter or exit. So that note was simply so that the fire chief's aware of it, has a say in it, so that if we need to respond for any emergencies, we can get emergency vehicles and personnel, not just to the fair, but also to Town Hall.
Now, in regards, and I've noticed notes on several of these requests, who is the enforcement officer? Is it up to the individual, like, fire, water, health, or is it yourself as the general enforcement officer of the town?
Yeah, no, it's, it's up to the individual department, but all of the events get inspected at minimum by building health and fire prior to the event.
Oh, okay.
So, and even during some of the weekend events, we pop in. I know the health department, if there's food, they'll come in during the event to make sure that all of the serve-safe items are followed, but the fire chief or one of his representatives or I usually come by on, on the weekend so that we can see how the event is, is playing out.
Oh, thank you very much.
So, yeah.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make, uh, make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the facilities request for Papa Squash Craft slash Vendor Fair and that we waive the fee of fees.
Mr. Karen, do I have a second? Motion is being made in a second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Next, review, discuss, and act, facilities request, D.R. Softball Car Wash. On Saturday, May seventh, Dyton Town Garage, Dyton Rehoboth Softball Team will be holding a car wash. This is an annual event. Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
I have no questions.
Mr. Karen? I'll accept a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen accept the facilities request from the Dyton Rehoboth Softball Car Wash and waive all appropriate fees.
Mr. Karen, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is aye. Next, we have the Fifth Annual Strawberry Festival. Review, discuss, and act. On behalf of the Dyton Historical Society, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, I would like to request a waiver of fees for our food permit for the Fifth Annual Strawberry Festival, which will be held on Saturday, June eighteenth, at the Pavilion and Town Grounds, is signed by Chris Pacheco, President, Dyton Historical Society. We also have a request to use, for use of facilities. The Dyton Lions Club has given permission to use the gazebo, but they will also be using the back of Town Hall for vendors. So I believe we will need two motions.
Well, just clarification. Number one is, I'm a member of the Dyton Historical Society, my wife is Chris Pacheco, but I just, a clarification on that, they got permission from the Lions Club to use the Pavilion and not the gazebo. So it's the Pavilion and not the gazebo. Ramalish, did we already vote on this, though? Not the waiver of the fees, but did we vote on, on the request?
Yeah, the request, but I don't think the waiving of the fees.
Yes, so I think we're only voting on.
So it's the waiving of the fees.
Just, okay, no, thank you, because I had both.
Yeah, yeah, you had, you had all the paperwork, yeah.
Um, are there any questions? Mr. Karen?
No, sir.
I will entertain a motion to waive the fee for the food permit for the Fifth Annual Strawberry Festival.
I can't make it.
I'll make a motion to waive the food permit for the Fifth Annual Strawberry Festival.
The chairman will step down to second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye.
I will abstain.
The motion passes with Mr. Pacheco abstaining.
Thank you.
I have a review, discuss, and act on amendment for, for facilities request. Mr. Ramalyn, could you speak on this, please?
Yeah, yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman. You'll see in the packet that, that there's a letter from the administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen. The reason for the recommendation to amend the facilities reservation request form is the fact that in the, like, in our policy and procedures manual, like, we do plainly say that the use of alcohol, like, in any events on town properties is prohibited, but there is, there is an offset, like, on the form itself, and the form itself is currently written, like, it does give the impression that alcohol is allowed. So what, you know, the, uh, the amended form, the amendment we would actually make is to make clear that alcohol, like, is actually on the facilities with reservation request form, like, any, like, any area that relates to the use of alcohol and to give the impression that the use of alcohol is allowed, we would strike. So it's very clear, uh, it's very clear that the, that the request form is consistent with the actual policy we have in place. And you can see on the request form, even, I believe, on the first page, you'll see where halfway down, like, with the vent details, like, it gives the impression that we do allow alcohol, and then, and then there's a phrase that says, if alcohol is being served, a liquor liability policy must be provided. Well, oh, yeah, like, that's like a leading statement, uh, be, because the policy we have, the policy we have directly prohibits alcohol in the first place.
Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
I have no questions.
Mr. Karen?
No questions.
At this time, I'll entertain a mo, a motion.
I'll make a motion that we change the facility reservation request form that the town uses and eliminate the line with the asterisk, if alcohol is being served as liquor, is served, a liquor liability policy must be provided, and a million dollars, see insurance for more details.
Do I have a second?
Second, that.
Motion made in second, Mr. Pacheco?
Yes, aye.
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Motion passes. We have the Cemetery Lawn Services Contract.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, we're, we're moving right along. The, the, this year's cemetery, cemetery lawn services contract, like, is the last year in the procure contract. This winter, we went out with a new three-year procurement. We, we had a number of respondents, like, I want to, I want to thank Superintendent Ferry and Christian Denay from the Cemetery Commission. In early May, we spent a good day together, touring all twenty-five of the town-owned cemeteries that we have, and it was very instructive. And we do, uh, have a low bid, we have a low bidder, a significantly low bidder, uh, which is Paul Sylvia, doing business as Dream Builders, and in year one, he, he proposed a contract in the amount of nineteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty dollars, and year two, twenty-one seven, twenty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty dollars, and in year three, twenty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, and, uh, yeah, uh, yeah, uh, you're like, and not, oh, yeah, and not only was Mr. Sylvia, oh, you know, like, by far the, the lowest bidder, uh, yeah, he, yeah, he's also a Dytonian, and he's done a really good job, so we're, so we're happy to make this recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
Just a comment, I used to be on the Cemetery Commission. The town has roughly fifty-four cemeteries that we're aware of, there could be more that we don't, we're not aware of. We do not maintain all of them, some of them are way in the woods, and we don't want to necessarily maintain those so that kids can go and party in the woods and have a nice area to, but I've been in some of these cemeteries, they're way in the woods, and they're great. I've, I've brought people from out of state who wanted to find graves of their ancestors. Mr. Sylvia? Mr. Sylvia has done this for a few years now for us, and I believe the last contract, he did not ask for an increase the whole three years, it was the same. So he's now asking for an increase, and I'm supporting that increase.
Mr. Karen?
No questions.
At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the Cemetery Law and Services Contract with Paul Sylvia doing business as Dream Builders LLC for fiscal year 2023 in the amount of $19,740, fiscal year 2024, $21,740, and for fiscal year 2025, $23,914, for a total of $65,394.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye, the motion passes. Review, act, I'm sorry, review, discuss, and act American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, contract grant agreement between the town of Dyton and Bristol County. Mr. Mullin?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman, I, 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 yeah, like, in the last, like, in the last, like, few months, in the last few months, we've talked extensively about the APPA funds that the town is eligible to apply for. Like, actually, beginning in June, June 2021, we received the first half, we received the first half of the $833,000 NEU payment directly from the federal government. At the end of this June, we're going to receive the other half of that, so we'll have, so we'll have our entire NEU allotment. The granted, the grant agreement before you tonight is the agreement, it's a boilerplate agreement that has to be in place before we have the ability to apply for any of the APPA funds that are being held by Bristol County. So this is a very, this is a, this is a very perfunctory boilerplate agreement that the county is asking all of, that the county is asking all the cities and towns to approve. Then, then having this in place, we will, we will have the ability to apply for the roughly, the roughly additional 1.4 to 1.5 million dollars that we also have available in APPA funding by way of the county. So this is just, I, yeah, yeah, like, again, it's the same agreement being approved by every other community, oh, you know, and then as we go forward, we'll be able, so we'll be able to apply, oh, so we'll be able to apply for the county funding. Oh, you know, one of the things that the board will remember is at the end of last, at the end of the last calendar year, the board approved the public safety, the public safety repeated project in the amount of $275,000. What we're gonna do is we're gonna move that project over to the county, so that is gonna free up, that is gonna free up all of the 800, the roughly $830,000 in the NEU funding. So, oh, yeah, like, in the, like, and we're eligible to apply through the county for the project, so, you know, we wanna move forward to do that, but in order to do that, we just have to have this grant agreement in place.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Pacheco?
Yeah, my only comment is that this is, the repeat is a very needed thing for our town, and if we can use APPA funds to pay for it in the amount of $275,000, that's a great opportunity for the town, so I'm, I'm gonna support this.
Mr. Karen?
No comment.
I just wanna add one, one point so that the voters know how the process goes. As you've heard, we've collected, we've received funding from the federal government for projects that support water, sewer,
Broadband.
Roads, bridges, and broadband, yep, thank you. I want to add that part of the decision-making process involves members of FinCom and definitely involves the Capital Outlay. This is not a decision of what gets funded and what doesn't get funded strictly by the Board of Selectmen or by Mr. Mullin. It is a group effort, and, and the decision is made by a group, it's not just one or two or the three of us here at the Board of Selectmen. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the, enter into the APPA grant contract with the, with Bristol County.
So, so move.
Mr. Karen?
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Review, discuss, and act employment contract for Annabella Powell, Executive Director, Council on Aging. Is Ms. Powell present? I don't, she...
She was on the Zoom, Mr. Chairman, at one point, and Mr. Ferry was also here. He probably got sick of me talking.
All of us talking.
Would you like to summarize this, or?
Yes, I would, Mr. Chairman. As a result of the board's vote to appoint, to appoint Bella Powell as the new Executive Director of the Council on Aging, the, the beginning last, the beginning last week, I, the beginning last week, I met together with, with Tom Ferry as the Chairman of the Council on Aging Board of Directors and Ms. Powell. Like, we, we had a discussion on the terms of an employment agreement, like, for her as a department head, with the town as the Executive Director as a Council on Aging. We came, we came to propose terms, like, for like a two-year contract, for a two-year contract with Ms. Powell, that, that actually, there's a, there's a typo here, if we can just make it, I just actually noticed it, like, effective April 14th.
Thank you.
Like, in number two, I apologize, but it's just over a two-year contract with, like, with like a starting salary of $60,000, like, effective, like, effective on April 13, 2022, beginning on July 1st, 2022. There would be a 2% increase, like, in the, like, in the Executive Director's wage at that point, and then in the final year of the contract, the, there would be another 2% wage increase as well. Everything else in the contract, like, really follows the Council on Aging Work Week, like, it follows the template that we use for vacation time, for sick leave, for personal time, holidays and the like, so it's really boilerplate the rest of it, and, yeah, like, and we brought it, we brought it forward also to the Council on Aging Board of Directors, so, for their support and for their approval as well, before, like, we brought it to the, before we brought it to the Board of Selectmen, and they've recommended it as well.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco?
No, I read the contract, I'm gonna say.
Mr. Karen? At this time, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the employment contract for Annabella Powell, Executive Director, Council on Aging, with the correction, with the typo that Mr. Mullin just mentioned.
As amended?
Yes. Second.
Motion has been made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Recommendation to appoint Mark Pacheco to the Cemetery Commission. Please be advised, the Dyton Cemetery Commission would like to recommend Mark Pacheco to serve on the Cemetery Commission effective immediately, respectively, Arthur Morton, Chairman, Chris Shannondoitt, Barbara Danforth, and Tom Ferry. It doesn't say, how long is this term, Mr. Mullin?
If I can speak?
Sure.
We will reappoint at our last meeting in June, all the boards, so we'll appoint him now until June, and then in June, we'll be reappointing all the boards, and I believe we maybe start doing it for two years, you know, in the past, we've done it for one year, and I believe our town clerk has requested that we make it longer, because it's a lot of work for his department to swear in all these people, so I think we'll, for most boards, we'll be doing it for two years.
So this appointment would be for, until what, May 30th?
It'll be till...
The end of the fiscal year.
June 30th?
Yeah, is it a June 30th, I don't know.
June 30th.
June 30th, okay, do I have?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Mark Pacheco to the Cemetery Commission.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Motion passes. Recommendation to reappoint Jeff Cavalo as the Serpent Commission Member. I believe Mr. Cavalo is already serving in this position, correct? So it would be a reappointment?
So, yes, like, a reappointment, he serves as a planning board representative, but he also serves as the Board of Selectmen's representative as well, like, and this is a reappointment, and he does a very good job at it.
Yes, he does. Please note, this vote was made unanimously by the Planning Board on April 6, 2022, and I know from serving on the Dyton Industrial Development Commission, we've developed a wonderful relationship, working relationship with Serpent, and Mr. Cavalo certainly helps to make that, yeah, make that a strong bond between the two, the town and Serpent. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend to reappoint Jeffrey Cavalo as Serpent Commission Member. Is it representing the Planning Board as well as the Board of Selectmen? Is he being appointed by both tonight?
Yes.
He's already been appointed by the Planning Board, so this would be the Board of Selectmen's appointment.
To represent the Board of Selectmen.
I second that.
Motion made in second?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Review, act, and discuss. Recommendation to appoint Paul Reynolds to the following committees: Capital Outlay Committee, Insurance Advisory Committee Alternate, Land Use Committee, Tax Possession Custodian. I might add that Mr. Reynolds was elected as Treasurer/Collector on Saturday, and congratulations and best wishes. I believe all of these committee appointments are necessary, are a part of his job responsibilities. Is that correct, Mr. Mullin?
Yes, yes, and we're thrilled to have him on board.
Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
I have no questions, don't...
Mr. Karen?
No questions.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Paul Reynolds to Capital Outlay Committee, Insurance Advisory Committee Alternate, Land Use Committee, Tax Possession Custodian.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen appoint Paul Reynolds to the following committees: Capital Outlay Committee, Insurance Advisory Committee Alternate, Land Use Committee, and Tax Possession Custodian.
Do you have a second, Mr. Karen?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Review, discuss, and act proposed expansion of TIF review board.
So, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the last, in the last few weeks, as I, as I noted in my memo, we've been approached by a property owner who's interested in the possibility of expanding their existing business into the town of Dyton. The property owner, the property owner has inquired about the possibility of a TIF option, you know, as it's, like, as it's outlined as a tool in the town's business guide to help attract economic development to the town. Like, at the current time, there are, there are actually three members, there are three members on the TIF review board, there's myself, there's the Chairman of the FinCom, and there, again, there is a local business owner. And what I'm proposing, like, and what I'm recommending is the, is the expansion and the restructuring of the TIF review board to, to include a more broad-based group of members, that includes a representative, a representative of the Selectmen, the town administrator, the principal assessor, the building commissioner, like, a representative of the DDIC, the Dyton Development Industrial Commission, like, also a resident at lodge, you know, and based, and based on, based on the expertise that each of these members would bring to the table, I do think it's a broader, oh, it's a broader, more all-encompassing group of stakeholders, you know, who can really go into, who can really go into a conversation with a potential local business who hopes to expand here, oh, you know, like, and basically have everyone at the table at the same time. So if we come up to, so if we are to come up with an agreement that we're, that we're able to have everybody in the loop who really needs, oh, you know, oh, who need, who needs really to be in the loop, oh, you know, so we can come up with something that works for the town, like, in order to propose it to, like, in order to propose it, you know, at some point, at some point to the full Board of Selectmen and then to Town Meeting as well.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
No, I've had a conversation with town administrator about this, so.
Mr. Karen? At this time, I will accept, entertain a motion to expand the TIF review board to include a representative of the Board of Selectmen, town administrator, principal assessor, building commissioner, representative of the Dyton Development Industrial Commission, and a resident at lodge.
I shall move.
Second.
Motion made in second, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Review, discuss, and act, permit renewals underground fuel, fuel storage, Taunton Yacht Club, 2125 Water Street, Ed Reese, 556 Somerset Avenue, Bochum B. Patel, 1995 Winthrop Street, Denise Patel, 1866 County Street. Do we need to take these as individual motions?
No, no, you can vote them as a whole, if that's the, if that's the will of the board, there's no problem with that.
Yeah, I almost wanna ask Patrick Higgins, because in the past, we've, we've approved these without giving the addresses, so I assume, my personal feeling is that we can, as Selectman Hull suggested, that we can list them all with the addresses.
I think that, I think that's fine, Mr. Pacheco.
They got it from the experts, so I will make, if it's okay with you, Selectman?
Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
If it's okay with you, I'll make a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the following fuel permits renewals for underground fuel storage for the Taunton Yacht Club at 2125 Water Street, Ed Reese, 556 Somerset Avenue, Bochum B. Patel, 1995 Winthrop Street, and Denise Patel, 1866 County Street.
Second.
Motion's made in second, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye, the motion passes. Review, discuss, and act, Fire Department surplus inventory for disposal. This letter from Chris, Jim, Chief Chris McGee. I am writing this letter requesting your permission to, to surplus the following equipment. One Kenwood TK-860HG-1 Mobile Radio, serial number 30900112. Kenwood TK-8801 Mobile Radio, serial number 51100176. One Kenwood TK-860H Mobile Radio, serial number 80500267. Kenwood TK-860 Mobile, Mobile Radio, serial number 90300369. One Kenwood TK-860H Mobile Radio, serial number 01200304. Kenwood TK-860G1 Mobile Radio, serial number 40800040. One Tech IQ5 Battery Conditioner, serial number D00034454. Four Netgear MR1100 Mobile Wi-Fi's, serial numbers 5DM38BND06052; 5DM38BNUO, I'm sorry, 06446; Two Verizon Jetpack MiFi's, MIFI6620L, Serial Number 990006370293432; Two Kyocera E4710 Cellphones, Serial Number 014390003451126; Two Samsung SGH A997 Cellphones, Serial Numbers R31D2OC76XV; And One AT&amp;T Wi-Fi MF923 Mobile Wi-Fi, Serial Number 328442580796. I'll entertain a motion to note this is surplus inventory for disposal.
I'll make a motion that we accept the request of Fire Chief McGee that the equipment just mentioned become surplus equipment.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Acknowledges, acknowledgments.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to suggest you go back to item Q, the fuel storage. I'm looking at the information in the packet, and in the packet Karen mentions that the two, Winthrop Street Gas and Value Gas would be contingent upon machine and required fees. So I would ask if, I'd ask Mrs. Brady if those fees have been paid. If not, I would suggest we revoke that so that those two addresses, Winthrop Street and County Street, which are the Patel's, would not be issued until the fees are paid.
Thank you. No, they have not.
They have not been paid. Mr. Higgins, thank you very much.
So I'll make a motion that the.
I'd reconsider the prior vote and put the restriction that the Patel's don't get their license renewals until the fees are paid.
What he said, Mr. Chairman.
I was going to say so move, but I'm not sure that's appropriate. I'm going to make a motion that we reconsider the license approvals that we just made for Winthrop Street Gas at 1995 Winthrop Street and Value Gas at 1866 County Street.
Mr. Karen?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. I'll entertain, I'll vote.
I'll vote aye.
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. I will also entertain a motion that these be tentatively approved subject to completing.
Receipt of the payment.
Yes.
Yeah.
Payment.
I'll make a motion that the Winthrop Street Gas, 1995 Winthrop Street, Dyton, Mass, and Value Gas at 1866 County Street, Dyton's fuel permit be approved with the condition that they pay all appropriate fees before a license is issued.
Mr. Karen?
Second.
Motion made in second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen? Chairman Hull is an aye. Correspondence. Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of April 6, 2022.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the regular meeting minutes of April 6, 2022, and that we waive the reading.
I'm not so sure I can second that, but.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to let Mr. Karen and the board know that I did reach out to the Director of the Division of Open Government on this issue about six weeks ago. Any member can vote on the acceptance of minutes and second the motion, even if they were not a member of the board at the time of the meeting. They're accepting them as the official record of the meeting.
That is correct.
So Peter has, Peter can second and vote on these minutes.
Okay, I second that motion then.
Motion made in second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Approval of the warrants. Warrant dated April 13, 2022.
I'll make a motion that we approve the warrants 41A22 in the amount of $115,952.19. And 41B22, $312,727.25.
Mr. Karen?
I second it.
Motion in a second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Public input. Just before we go into public input, I have been giving much thought to some of the events that have happened over the last six months while serving as a member of the Board of Selectmen. And I've also been guilty of this myself. I looked into the policy manual, and I did not find a policy in place in regarding the discussion in a public meeting of non-union employees or people that serve on appointed boards. And I am not sure the format for establishing a policy, but I would like to serve notice that I'm going to pursue this. I don't know if it's something that a committee forms. I know we have a bylaw committee, but I believe the Selectmen can establish policy, working with the town administrator, if need be, legal counsel. But I would like to establish a policy that will apply not only to the members of the Board of Selectmen, but also to the public. We had an issue earlier this evening that we were in a gray area because we don't have a policy. And Mr. Mullen is the human rights officer, and he handles grievances and complaints. But I just would prefer being able to, before public input takes place, to read to the public what is allowed and what isn't allowed as we go forward. With that said, I will open it up to public input.
Chairman Hull?
Yes, Mr. Higgins.
After taking telephone amendments, good to see you, Peter. Congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
Ken, I hate to say this, but I've known Peter longer than I've known you.
Oh, is that right? I know you're from the same town, so.
Yes, we go way back.
Yeah.
Yeah, Peter and I were in elementary school together, so. That predates you.
Yeah, I was probably in high school then.
Yeah. Anyway, as far as public input, public input is allowed at the discretion of the chair under the open meeting law. You don't, nobody has a right to discuss or address the board unless the chairman so desires or so allows. What has happened in the majority of the public bodies throughout the Commonwealth is that the Board of Selectmen or the public body will accept public input, and they will take whatever is given to the public body under advisement and not react or answer any questions as to, you know, for example, I have a question under executive session under 2181. My question is, was that person who is being, the person who's being accused of whatever complaint is, were they notified 48 hours in advance of the notice of the meeting? They do have under A1 a statutory right to appear. They also have a right under 2181 to request that that discussion be held in open session. But I don't want to know what the complaint is or who it is. I'm just sharing the information with you. As far as anything human, anything human resources related or any employment-related or complaints against municipal bodies, members of that, they should file a complaint with the town administrator and ask, just like this executive session you have scheduled under 28 on A1. If I'm a member of the Planning Board and somebody's complaining about my conduct on a planning board, they can file a complaint with Mr. Mullen. Mr. Mullen can get with Chairman Hull because Mr. Hull is responsible for the agenda and, you know, put on an executive session that, hey, Pat, you know, we've got a complaint against you for doing something stupid, and, you know, we'd like to discuss it in an executive session and see if we can work it out. And then I have the right to bring in a lawyer and bring in a court reporter and say, no, I have nothing to hide. Let's do it in open session. But, I mean, anybody who brings up, if they want to take potshots at people because they share on public bodies, they're a municipal employee, I think that's off limits. I really do. Chairman Hull, I will send the town administrators some public input policies that are used by some communities and other public bodies in other communities and send it to you for your endeavor. But I will say that it was a pleasure. I got in late. I was watching. Oh, I believe Senator Pacheco said something about what they do with the Humber Master in Somerset. And it's funny because I was watching their meeting before yours. The last several weeks, now, you guys have a advisory and finance committee or FinCom or whatever you call it. What the Somerset Selectmen did this year, and I found it very good, they had a joint meeting of the Selectmen and the FinCom in open session where the department heads came in and explained their budgets to both the Selectmen and the FinCom, which was good because then the meetings would kind of advise the general public could be there. They could watch from home. And then when they're department heads, only have to explain their budget one time. I know in Swanji, they come to the Board of Selectmen, and they present their budget to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen votes to recommend it to the advisory and finance board. Then the next night, the advisory and finance board meets, and the department heads got to go in and give the whole spiel all over again. And that might be a good work, a good use of resources for the town. Maybe Mr. Mullen can reach out to Mike Gallagher, the internal administrator in Somerset, and get some more details on how that got together. But, I mean, that might be a good work of resources and a good use of time for your department heads. You don't have to come to meetings, you know, two or three times to explain their budgets. But that's my public input for tonight. You did a good job, Peter. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I did like, you know, I did get along with Dr. Z, and you have some tough heels to fill. And I say that because when Mallory left, Dr. Z was going to be the acting town administrator. So when he, when she left, I said to Dr. Z, you've got some tough heels to fill. So I'm sure that the Ruby's red slippers have been left to you.
Thank you.
Best of luck in your, best of luck in your new career. And there is an open meeting law webinar on Tuesday at 12:30, and I would suggest that you take advantage of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate our friendship, and you all are doing a great job.
Mr. Higgins, thank you. Your advice is much appreciated.
We'll take it under advisement.
Thank you for your technical assistance.
Ken, you know, it's funny. Ken, you don't like this. My father's house recently sold, thank God, and my brother is going through some of my father's stuff. And he sent me a text message with a picture. And he said, I thought it was a rumor, but I guess it's true you graduated. And he found my high school diploma from 1975. And as luck would have it, I picked it up for my brother, and when I opened it up, it ripped in half like the curtain after the crucifixion of Jesus on Good Friday. So Monday night, I went to the school committee and picked up a new diploma cover. And the five members were, they were having a meeting on election night. Scott Rollins, which came and decided not to vote for reelection. So I'm in there, and I'm, you know, talking to him. And I said to Eric Graham, he has a beard. I said, that's not a beard. This is a beard. You know, you can't, if you're going to grow a beard, go all the way. And then I said to him, I said, so who's going to be the next chairman of the school committee at your next meeting? And Ken, you'll appreciate this. Jimmy Cavalo says, don't answer that. He's setting us up for an open meeting law complaint. We've got a forum deal. We're not in the time of the meeting. It's not on the agenda. So I'll give you the same credos that I gave for Jimmy the other day that you all have your intentions, and I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We are going to be going into executive session. And we will not be returning to open session following that. Under Massachusetts General Law, I will now, at this time, accept a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session.
Mr. Hull, give the reasons for the executive session prior to the vote.
No, we're going, Mr. Pacheco is going to make that in part of the motion. I was just, I was just.
What a lot of bodies have been doing is the chairman will say, we have a need for an executive session under 3821A, complain to municipal public body, 2183, that undergoes negotiations. And then the chairman will ask for a motion after executive session. But you can do it any way you want, so long as it's listed. Thank you.
Would you want me to read it?
I'll read it.
Thank you.
If it's okay with Patrick. I make a motion that we go into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1. One, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaint or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3. Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Do you declare, Chairman?
So declare.
A, Dyton Fire Department Local 4332. B, Dyton Police Officer Mass, Cop Local 306. And under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6. Six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of personal property, excuse me, of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, potential real estate acquisition for library operations. Under chapter of general law, chapter, general law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7. Seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. And also to executive session minutes for the approval of the Board of Selectmen's executive session meeting minutes of March 30, 2020, and approval of the Board of Selectmen's executive session meeting minutes of April 6, 2020.
Chairman Hull is to declare under eight, under number six.
I did. So declare.
You may not have heard him, but he did declare.
Yes.
Would you like me to repeat the motion again?
No, no.
No, no.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Motion made in second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is aye. I want to thank all of you for attending this evening. People on Zoom, thank you.
Happy Easter, everybody.
Happy Easter.
Happy Patriots' Day. Happy marathon.